Our session with Mayor and City Council will come to order. The date is Tuesday, December 6th. I'll note that Agenda Item Number 10 has been removed from the agenda for tonight. Move to Agenda Item Number 1, Draft Ordinance to amend ordinance number 1767, approving an amendment to the R-02-01 site in landscape plans for Park Place to remove a condition requiring Parcel C to be included in the Park Place Condominium Association. You have the floor.
Good evening. The proposed ordinance is to amend previously approved ordinance number 1767 to remove a condition requiring Parcel C to be included in the Park Place Condominium Association. Parcel C of the site was approved for a multifamily rental development and therefore cannot be a part of the condo association. The remainder of ordinance number 1767 shall remain unchanged and full of force. It was approved March 25, 2013. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have any questions, sir?
Yeah, just a minute, I'm going to ask you one question. So we made an error, is that correct?
That is correct.
Putting into the document. And this is just correcting that error and taking it out of the document.
That is correct.
Doesn't really change anything, just corrects an error. Okay. Mr. Ricks, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Crary?
No questions.
Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Okay, so ready to move forward with this agenda item? Introduction at the meeting on Monday night? We're good to go. Move to Agenda Item Number 2, Draft Ordinance to amend the Code of City of Laurel, Chapter 18 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 12, Division 1, to regulate the parking and storage of boats in the city and to amend the title of Division 1. Jack, are you presenting this one? John, I guess you're presenting, right?
This is, this was brought before the council at the request of Mr. Ricks. It was his, to resolve a problem around the city with boats that are basically inoperable. They're not sitting on trailers, they're rusting out in, you know, in people's yards. And we have a ordinance, obviously, for abandoned vehicles and for vehicles that are inoperable in trailers, and it didn't extend to boats. And all we did was take that same ordinance and extend it to watercraft. And actually, that's the word we used in the ordinance. So all it does is, all it does is expand the abandoned and inoperable vehicle regulations to include the same thing for boats. That's all, that's what it's meant to accomplish. Thank you.
Mr. Ricks, this is your ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, I'd like to have my name added as sponsor.
Okay.
Along with you. And let me speak to this just for a second. As I'm moving around the city, I've located about six or seven different places that have watercraft, and there may be more, if I do some more work on it, that where they're just sitting around and they're not registered, they're in just repair and just laying in people's backyards. And I just think it's another way for us to clean up the city and for us to, you know, move forward with that effort. So I do sponsor this and I would like to see it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Ms. Crary?
I have no problems with this.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholas? Okay. So if you'll take care of the sponsor line this round, and we'll introduce this at the meeting on Monday. Let me go back to Item 1 for a minute. If you would change that to this round, sponsored by the President at the request of the administration. Move to Agenda Item Number 3, Ordinance Number 1885, An Ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Economic Development Program to expand the business, businesses that can apply for the Main Street Relocation Grant Program and to amend the Retail Storefront Facade Improvement Program to provide grants for certain exterior improvements and to eliminate, eliminate the sign and commercial property improvement rebates from the program and providing an effective date. Jack, or I'm sorry, excuse me. Your staff, you have the floor.
Assistant Director.
The purpose of this ordinance is to amend the Main Street Economic Development Programs, which were established in March 26, 2012, by ordinance 1740. The program currently includes the Main Street Relocation Grant Program, the Retail Storefront Facade Improvement Program, the Main Street Sign Grant Program, the Main Street Commercial Property Improvement Grant Program. The amendment would, the amendment would include an opportunity to broaden the business base to take advantage of the relocation grant, also for the facade improvement program for business and property owners to receive a $5,000 grant as opposed to a matching rebate. And the revisions will also eliminate the sign portion in the commercial property improvement grant. However, applications that have already submitted, application would be grandfathered into the established program guidelines outlined in ordinance number 1740, so they wouldn't be affected by the current, the proposed legislation.
Mr. Ricks?
I have no problem. It's another effort to move Main Street forward. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Crary?
Yeah, it's a good program. Anything we can do to enhance it, I agree with.
Great. Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Okay, it's been stated, this is another way to enhance the businesses of Main Street, on Main Street. And we can enhance the business on Main Street, we increase the tax revenue to the city, and that, of course, we appreciate. Okay, well, this will be introduced at the council meeting on Monday. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 4, Resolution Number 816, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Laurel, Maryland, supporting the city's participation in the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development Main Street Affiliate Program and approving the city's application for the program. You have the floor.
The proposed resolution is for the city to support the participation in the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development Main Street Affiliate Program and approve the city's application for the program. Benefits of being a part of this program will include, for the city, technical assistance and support, assistance with developing a revitalization plan for downtown Main Street area, and onsite visit by state representatives to meet in toward the downtown area, grants for the city to possibly utilize for the Main Street corridor, and also application guidance on being designated as a part of Main Street, Maryland. Currently, there are 28 cities within the state are designated part of the Maryland designation program, and it would be good for the City of Laurel to be added as well.
Sounds good. Mr. Ricks?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Ms. Crary?
Good idea.
Thank you, Ms. Crary. Ms. Nicholas? Excellent. So we'll go ahead and introduce this at the meeting on Monday night. Move to Agenda Item Number 5, Ordinance Number 1895, MAP Amendment Number 866, An Ordinance to approve MAP Amendment Application Number 866 for rezoning of fragmented parcels located at the intersection of Van Duzen Road and West Side Boulevard, Laurel, Maryland, consisting of 0.996 acres, identified as part of Parcel D, part of Parcel E, and a portion of state, of a State Highway Administration parcel, and is part of the West Side Boulevard roadbed for placement in the MXT zone of the City of Laurel Unified Land Development Code. You have the floor.
The purpose of this ordinance is to approve MAP Amendment Application for rezoning of fragmented parcels located at the intersection of Van Duzen Road and West Side Boulevard. This area consists of .996 acres identified as part of Part D and Parcel E of the West Side Development. Also, a portion of it is the State Highway Administration road, which is the West Side Boulevard roadbed. Parcels to be rezoned from Public Institution PI to be placed in the MXT designation of the City of Laurel's Unified Land Development Code. This wasn't done at the time this was annexed into the city, so it's just trying to rectify a mistake that was made.
I'll note that, welcome, Mr. Smalls. Agenda Item Number 5, Fred. I'll note that hearings are going to be held on December 13 by the City of Laurel Planning Commission, correct?
On December 13.
December 13. And it'll be, appear in the Prince George's Sentinel as the paper of record?
That is correct, sir.
Mr. Ricks?
Can you tell me how we identified these parcels?
Actually, the applicant, Mr., the attorney for West Side, this was noticed when they had, were going to try to get this done, and State Highway Administration had approached them, because part of this was supposed to be done with the reconfiguration of the Van Duzen corridor, but State Highway Administration didn't use all the land, so a portion of it was given to West Side, so it kind of got left out of the fray.
So that was part of the negotiations that was taking place prior to the construction, that they were jockeying to see how much and where they were going to take the land from the developer?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Ms. Crary?
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls?
No questions, Ms. President.
Okay. I assume there's a survey of this that's been done, is that correct? That'll be recorded?
Yes, sir.
And who did the survey? Did we do it, or did the?
The applicant had someone do it.
Okay. You looked at it, John?
We have, I mean, yeah, as, as it was described.
Okay.
There was an agreement with State Highway that we were supposed to get some property.
Yeah, I understand.
It was always part of the deal, and for some reason, it was left out of it. So, yeah, we have a survey that's been.
Okay, excellent. All right. And that'll be recorded at the same time?
That'll be.
As part of the agree, okay, excellent.
Mr. President, may I ask a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Is it, is that partial or parcels, is that developable, developable?
Part of Parcels D and E is a part of the commercial component for the West Side Development, so it may be developed, it's not sure, because the site plan hasn't been approved for the commercial component yet.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
If I could follow up on that?
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Mr. Smalls?
If I could just kind of follow up on what Councilman Ricks started. The process, if it is determined that it's developable, would have to go through the same process that the larger parcels went through, approval, planning commission, and all of the other, because that it would have to go through, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls. Okay, if there's no objection, this will be introduced at the meeting on Monday night. As I indicated, there's some requirements as far as the add in the paper and the planning commission, and we'll see how it rolls out, because we do not have a meeting, a second meeting in December. Okay, we just have the one meeting. Move to Agenda Item Number 6, Ordinance Number 1896, Tax Amendment Number 243, An Ordinance amending the City of Laurel Unified Land Development Code, Article 1, Zoning, Division 5, Zoning Districts, Section 20-9 point, -9.5, Table of Industrial Uses, to make Tattoo Parlour, Body Piercing Studio a special exception use in the industrial general zone, and amending ULDC, Article 1, Division 10, Special Exceptions to add regulations pertaining to the operation of body art establishments in the city and providing an effective date. All right. You have the floor still?
I do. This proposed, this proposed ordinance is to amend the Unified Land Development Code, where it will make Tattoo Parlours and Body Piercing Studios allowed by special exception in the industrial general zone. It's already allowed by special exception in the industrial commercial services zone. And also, this ordinance would allow for regulations to be placed in a special exceptions criterion portion for body art establishments.
Mr. Smalls, do you have any questions?
For those of us who may not be generally familiar with areas where industrial general zones are located, can you give us just a general idea of one or two areas where they may be located?
Right. Part of it is Lafayette Avenue is IG Zone and Industrial Commercial Services Zone, and also the Commerce Center area is zone industrial as well.
Okay. How about the area Bray Green? In that area, is that industrial general, or is that?
There's some industrial general, and there's a couple portions that's ICS as well.
So those areas could possibly be locations for this kind of use?
If approved, be a special exception.
Right, okay, great. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls. Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Ms. Crary?
No questions.
Let me try that again, Ms. Crary?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I don't know if on page 5, at the top, number 12? Is that something we can remove?
Remove number 12?
Yeah.
Do you not like the wording of it?
No, I just think that if somebody wants to disguise a birthmark, that should be allowable. I don't know why that would be a banned use.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we could get some further insight into that one. I just thought it was, you know, probably a clever way. On page 9, there was signage that's supposed to be, that would be displayed.
Correct.
And should we insert the words "and" is permanent when we're warning? Because isn't that a warning sign?
That is correct.
Say that again? It's permanent.
Permanent signage.
When, when, okay. And on page 8, and I guess we can deal with it on page 7 too, but page 8, 4C, should we be requiring language like state identification, or driver's license, or passport? And it would come up on page 7, too. If we're, if we're not allowing anybody under 18, shouldn't we? I think it calls for written verification, and I think we can beef that up with state ID or.
You could, sure.
It says written proof of age right now. It says written proof of age right now.
Right, right.
But if you wanted to beef that up, and say something.
So they're looking at a picture versus just something that's written like a birth certificate would prove their age, too.
I mean, if that's what the council wants, you can add whatever you, whatever you think.
Isn't there always understating, an understatement of certain types of written proofs that you can accept?
Mostly it's, mostly it's, as you know, it's driver's licenses. And then the, the MVA also, for people that don't have driver's license, will issue official identification cards, which also will have your picture on it. And beyond that, there isn't much, you're right.
That's it?
Is that not acceptable?
It is acceptable. So it's, what was written in the statute is that written verification, and I think you should have, essentially, I'm asking for a photo ID for somebody that's coming on the premises or presenting themselves as an artist, that they would have something to present, that this is me, and this looks like me.
So that's what you're looking for? We could, we can come up, I think, if the council wishes, we can come up with some language that satisfies that request. Or at least talk about it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I took your name, don't be following me.
That's okay.
No, but can we get back to Donna's number 12? Because it says, "No skin areas shall be penetrated." And if they're doing, they're doing all kinds of, trying to think of the word. Piercings, thank you. That is a penetration.
Don't ask me.
Well, I'm struggling with it, but I mean, I know you have to pierce, that's a penetration.
You don't have to struggle with it. Administration accepts your recommendation. We're fully open.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Donna, did you have anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Crary. Let me, let me, first of all, let me come to Mr. Smalls first. Go ahead, Mr. Smalls.
I just wanted to just ask Donna if, and John, if perhaps just simply the language that says, in terms of identification, state-issued ID, which would cover both a driver's license and non-drivers, as well as, you know, perhaps passport, or some type of official identification?
I think I know what the council's looking for based on your questions, and I think I can come up with something to satisfy it.
Thank you, John. Mayor?
You may have taken care of it, just, I was going back to what Donna, I wasn't sure if that's the individual or the person working there, that's what I needed clarification on.
Oh.
You have it on 8? On 6? Oh, no, mind, you referenced both of them, I'm sorry. Okay, I got it. I'm okay.
Right, you referenced both.
Thank you, Mayor. Smalls, you all right?
Just for clarification, back to page 9, where we talk about the sign required, that the operator, it says that the operator, neither the establishment nor the operator is licensed by the City of Laurel, but wouldn't the operators have to be licensed by maybe DLLR or, or, no? They don't?
That's part of the issue we're dealing with. We only require, we're going to do it here locally.
That's correct.
So we would require them to have some type of credentials?
We do it locally.
Okay, good, okay.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls. Anything else? Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and introduce this at the meeting on Monday night. Move to Agenda Item Number 7, Resolution Number 10-16, A Resolution to Approve the Economic Development Tax Credit for Prospecs 606 Main Street as provided for in Section 16-6 of the City of Laurel Code. Michelle?
Mr. President, Prospecs Ventures LLC has made application for the tax credit program. This would be a three-year tax credit, 60% of the taxes, the FY '17 taxes were $1,238.95. 60% of that is $743.37, just to give an idea of what we're looking at. The allowance in the current budget is, is able to absorb this credit at this time, and we would make sure, moving forward, that we would be able to accommodate that for the following two years.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Ricks?
No questions.
Ms. Crary?
I don't, no, we're not, Ms. Saylor. Are they planning on, do they have to update the property for their business? Is that?
They have already done that, and they received the Main Street Relocation Grant funding.
Okay, so they just need some money to get some things done?
Just, this is the tax credit program for economic development, so they're entitled to this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crary. Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Mr. Smalls?
No questions, Ms. President.
Okay. So we'll introduce this on Monday. Does this only require one hearing this round?
Okay.
It's required, too, okay. So it'll be introduced at the meeting on Monday. Move to Agenda Item Number 8, Resolution Number 9-16, A Resolution Approving Conversion of Certain Delinquent Miscellaneous Invoices to Uncollectible Status Ceasing Collection Efforts. Michelle?
Mr. President, at this time, I would recommend that these accounts, these delinquent accounts, be written off the city's books. I feel that the accounts receivable operations in my office have exhausted all the efforts that we have at our disposal, and we would just need to move forward with getting these off the books.
All right. Ms. Nicholas?
Question?
It looks like, from what I see, there are quite, there are seven that are over $1,000, and quite a few that are $10 and $20. Can you tell me, how many attempts do you try to make, have you made?
I'm not sure the number, but for example, we sent out invoices recently on the 26th of October for special refuse pickups in October, and we have envelopes that were returned on December 1st. No forwarding, no, nothing. So we go back to the list provided to us by Public Works from the special trash, from the special refuse collection, try to make contact with these people. So for the $10 and $20 collections, where people have just left the premises with no forwarding of any kind, and you're talking about a $10 and $20 charge, it becomes cost prohibitive at a certain point. We do have maybe 1% or 2% of the people who will come to our window and say, "I'm moving. I've called for a special trash, and I'd like to prepay," but those are few and far between. The larger amounts that you see are for grass cuttings, where there were code violations, and at this point, we're able to send lien notices to the county to get that on the real estate tax bill. Sometime, there are, there are timing issues with creating the bill and sending it to them, and I can't verify for you how quickly that turnaround is to get that on the tax bill, so that when that property changes hands, those invoices get paid. But we do it as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Ms. Crary?
No questions.
Thank you, Ms. Crary. Mr. Ricks?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls?
Michelle, I don't know if anyone noticed this, but just at a glance, I noticed on the last page of this list, that 606 Main Street is, is on here for write-off, and that was our previous agenda item. He's there.
When Ms. Polley has had applications previously, before, for the Main Street Relocation Grant, or anything where we're providing grant or credits of any kind, we run a check on our books to make sure that it's not the people that are actually applying, so I'll check for you.
Okay.
But I would hazard a guess that this was a previous tenant, previous.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. There was some conversation before the meeting about this. I'm reminded that we did this one other time in the number of years I've been here, rolled all these up and went ahead and.
It's been six years since we did the last one at this point, and since then, you've approved ordinance 1882, which allows us to attach the tenants of delinquents to the owners of the properties, as well as working with Public Works. When people are calling for service, those folks are looking up the accounts. If people have an account, they're notified that, you know, the pickup will, the next pickup won't happen, or they need to come in and pay, so that we can keep things moving. The same with permits.
And again, for all of these that we haven't collected, it's been a large number that we have collected. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I understand it? I understand it? Okay. If there's no further objection, we'll go ahead and introduce this at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday. Move to agenda item number nine, bid recommendation for LA 17-016 City Streets Improvement Project. Rob, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, Public Works had put together a bid package to do various streets, Laurel Place, Fairlawn Avenue, the 200 block of 10th Street, Avondale Street, and Clay's Lane. At the opening of the sealed bid on November 18th, there were six bids that came in on these streets, ranging anywhere from $295,000 all the way up to $965,000. There is funding for these streets provided through the FY 2017 through 2022 CIP, using bonds and GOB funds. Espina Paving, out of Woodbridge, Virginia, came in at $295,073, as opposed to the next lowest bidder, which was MT Laney at $334,251 and some change. Based on the past, our, having worked with Espina before, back in 2014, we're recommending that we award Espina this contract for $295,073. We're also asking for a 15% contingency of $44,260, based on preliminary problems we in, we believe will take place when we open up Clay's Lane. A lot of subgrade may need to be repaired at that time. So the total, what we're looking for, for Espina would be $339,333.95.
Okay, Rob, thanks. Mr. Ricks?
No question.
Thank you, Ms. Query.
No problem with this.
Thank you, Ms. Query. Ms. Nicholas? Mr. Small?
I'm fine.
Rob, let me just ask one question. Are they going to do this this year, or you think in the spring?
I believe what they've talked about is possibly coming in and doing some of the concrete work, weather permitting, on these streets, and then coming in in the spring and having to do all the asphalt.
I guess they're getting close to closing the asphalt plants?
That's correct.
Unfortunately.
Yes.
Okay. So this be on the agenda Monday night for approval? There's no objection? As I indicated earlier, agenda item number 10 will be postponed. Agenda item number 11, bid recommendation for the purchase of one dump truck and one passenger bus. Rob?
Yes, sir. We had put together a package to purchase a 10-ton dump truck with a plow and a salt spreader, and one 14-passenger bus. The purchase of the bus would increase the fleet by one. Prior to putting this out, we found that Johnson Truck Center out of Landover has a state of Maryland contract for the purchase of the dump truck, and Chriswell Chevrolet has a Montgomery County contract for the purchase of this bus. Funding is provided through the replacement program, using bond money and some GOB funds. The cost of the dump truck is $148,076, and the 14-passenger bus is $60,875, or $870.55. So we're recommending to purchase both of these vehicles for a total cost of $209,636.55.
Okay, Rob, thanks. Mr. Smalls?
Mr. Free, can you tell us what the bus will be used for, and how frequently it'll be used?
I believe that they're planning to try to use this on a daily basis. It's not coming with handicapped accessibility. The vans that we have now, some of the seniors are having difficulties getting in and out of the vans, whereas the bus would be lower with a regular bus opening to make it easier to get in and out of this, this unit. So I believe they're looking to use this on a daily basis.
And primarily for our seniors?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Ms. Nicholas?
No question.
Ms. Query?
I'm fine with this.
Mr. Ricks?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. That concludes the agenda. If there's any questions on any of these agenda items before the meeting on Monday, please route them through the city administrator and make sure that Ms. Rao knows about them, your questions. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.